All right, good evening. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, April 24th, meeting of the Planning Commission of Corder Madera. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Would you please call the roll for the commission?
Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Commissioner Friedman had notified us that she would be absent tonight.
She wasn't there.
So, at this point, we open the meeting to public comment for something that is not on the agenda. So if you have something on your mind you'd like to speak about and tell the commission about that we are not talking about later on, you may step up to the microphone and you have three minutes. If that's the case, please do so now. And if not, we'll close that session and we'll go right to our new hearing. So tonight, we're here for the Village of Corder Madera Restoration Hardware Expansion Project Permit Amendment. This is a permit amendment to modify the precise plan, which includes design review, and amend the conditional use permit of the previously approved RH Gallery building at the Village of Corder Madera. No modifications to the gravel lot or to the development agreement are proposed. So there's some history to this, and I'm sure Mr. Boyle will take us through it and lay out the intention and issue before us. So, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. It's been a while. I just calculated, it's been four months was the last time I was here. Good to be back. So the project before you is, yes, the permanent amendment to modify the RH Gallery, which was, you recommended approval back in November, and the Town Council approved back in December of last year. The modifications to the gallery are to, one, to relocate the restaurant to the third level. Originally, it was designed on the first level. This will result, second, is to reduce the total building area, that's the total square footage of the three levels combined by 10 percent. And changing, they'll be changing the first floor, floor plan, and in doing so, one will be able to access through the building from east to west. There will be no change in the building height. So this is just an overview of the project. Again, vicinity map on your left, we're talking about the Village of Corder Madera on the east side of Highway 101, and the project site image on lower right there. So specifically, the entitlements that are being changed are changing the precise plan, which is integrated with the designer review findings, and secondly, the conditional use permit is being changed because the restaurant is going from the lower level to the upper level. So those are the entitlements that are being changed in this permit amendment. So a little bit more detail in terms of the modification to the building itself. The footprint is being reduced by approximately 27 percent. The original footprint is shown there in red, a little thin red line on the outside, and the revised footprint is shown in green. So you're going from roughly a 24,000 square foot footprint to an 18,000 square foot footprint. Landscaping area is significantly increasing by about 154 percent. Basically, those, the trees along the north, south, and east elevations are all being added. Before, that was, as you can see by the red line, that was pretty much the edge of the building. So now you'll have quite a landscape buffer around three sides of the building. Looking at the elevations, one at a time, the first elevation, which is the main elevation facing the mall, or to the west, the original design to the right, I'm sorry, upper left, and the new design on the lower right. Main change is, instead of, you know, originally you'd walk into the main entrance and have a two-story element looking up into a pyramid-type of greenhouse, and now you will walk into just a solid main floor and then make your way up. The restaurant is moved to the top, which is accessed through large staircases and elevators. So the main change is that roof element with the dining area in the glass, and then to the left, to the left or right, or north and south of the glass atrium is public areas for viewing. Not a significant change, just jumping back to the first floor elevation, not a significant change there, and relative, not a significant change on the second floor at the west elevation. This is a graphic that the applicant has provided to us. So the building you see is the old building, and the red is showing where the new building would fall. So again, showing the reduction in size, basically. The red dashed is the café in the foreground, and the orange, or the back line is the kitchen and service area in the back. It just kind of gives you a perspective of the change in massing and elevation from old to new, or approved to propose. East elevation, definitely a significant change, much more of an open feel. Now you have two, or a large entryway on the bottom there, which didn't have in the previous plan, as was talked about at both commission and council. You know, the original plan, those brown doors were kind of the service area in the back of the café, and now that area is much more open. You can also see, back to the first floor of the new plan, you can see the greenery on the side, on either side. Can't see, yeah. And then, in terms of the third level, again, we're looking at the back of the kitchen, but to try to give that some articulation and some interest, the applicants provide windows and greenery to spruce that up as much as possible, even though it is the, more or less, a service area or the back of the kitchen for the restaurant. And again, a similar image of the east elevation showing the approved and the proposed, and the reduction of both the left side and the right side. South and north elevations, south elevation proposed on top, and approved and proposed down below. Main change is, you know, going from numerous small windows, you know, 12 small windows in the original plan, and going to much larger, kind of, open windows and larger glass on the new proposed plan. Also, the screened area, the landscape hedge, they're calling it here. And then, up above, is the glass atrium for seating area, and then to the right in the top floor is the kitchen and some of the utility uses. North elevation, basically just a flip of the south, showing very similar change in massing, you know, quite a bit more glass on the first and second floor of this elevation. Again, the larger windows as opposed to many smaller ones. And overall, reduction, basically, on the lower image, that whole bottom-left area's being, you know, sliced off to reduce the footprint of the building. Environmental work was done. Christine Gaspar from GHD is here, if you have any questions regarding the addendum to the environmental impact report that was done. That was done to analyze the revised project and to determine if there are any changes in impacts or any additional impacts, and it was determined through that document that there were no additional impacts or significant changes in impacts, no need for changing in any mitigation measures, and no additional SEQA analysis is required. So in approving this project, you'll be, as part of the resolution, you'll be approving the environmental document as well. Building materials have not changed. There are, brought the samples out again, but basically the same building materials as the original project. So in conclusion, the project results in a reduction in total, you know, square footage of the building, a reduction in the footprint, an increase in landscaping, no change in the height or parking situation, and no new change, or no new or changed environmental impacts, and staff is able to make all of the required findings for the permanent amendment, which includes the precise plan, design review, and conditional use permit. And I have the findings on the screen if you need to ask any questions or review them. Yeah, and the updated reso, which I provided to you via email earlier, is at your place as well as in the back. And also, thank you, you also received one comment this evening from a citizen regarding the project, and that's the only comment we have received since the notice went out for this public hearing. Yes, and that email is available in the back as well. And that concludes my report.
Brief, thank you, Phil. So with that said, we can go right to the applicant's presentation of it for us, I believe. So unless the staff has any que, or the commission has any questions for staff at this point?
No.
Okay. Rob, you're up, I would gather.
Hi, dear. (inaudible). The secrets on how to get that worked, Adam, it's not. Sorry, Rob.
Where's Joanne? Where's Joanne?
She's home.
Oh.
She doesn't need to be here.
She doesn't have to do some minutes.
She does it remotely.
Of course.
So, Adam, I don't know if you have any secret on how to get that, for some reason, the keyboard's not working.
Peter.
To put on Rob's.
Well, we are still trying to monitor, but we didn't make the keyboard work also.
Yeah. I moved it close to it and I went.
It'd make a lot of sense.
Well, I think that's, I see that as an option.
Yeah.
Yeah. (inaudible). Which one's which? Uh, Rob.
Screen down at the bottom.
Screen down at the bottom. (inaudible).
Hi, good evening. My name's Rob Eddington. I'm a Director of Development at Restoration Hardware. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Thank you, Phil, for that presentation, and to all the staff, and even to the town people for coming tonight. I just have a few preliminary comments, and then I would like to turn most of the architectural elements over to Jim Gillum, who is our conceptual designer from Backham Gillum Kroger, and Wayne Chubb, who is our architect of record, Hobbs and Black, and also Samina Sade, who is a Director of Architecture and Design at RH. Incredible staff and outside consultants, and so proud that they could be here tonight. So one of our core values at RH is vision, and to us, we use the phrase, "vision is everything." It's something that we remind ourselves every day, and we live it all day long. It's really what leads us, and it really ignites us, and I want to say it inspires us every day. So what you saw before was a vision, and it was approved by the Planning Commission unanimously, approved by the Town Council unanimously. Then we sort of flow into another core value of RH is what we call innovation. And it really, it just inspires us even more than vision. It's something that we remind ourselves every day and every night. What we say to ourselves, either we're striving to get better, or we're getting worse, because there's no such thing as staying the same. The status quo is not really something that we admire. So we have these creative minds and these innovative minds at RH, and it really starts with our CEO, Gary Friedman, Chairman of the Board, Chief Executive Officer, and this is a design that was inspired by him, and he is the true root of the innovation. With those two concepts and those two core values, I really want to bring up the designers and let them explain everything that we're doing. One thing that we really have made an effort to do was make sure that all the public amenity space that we've talked about so many times remains in this building. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Samina.
Thank you. Hi there. I'm Samina Sade, Director of Architecture and Design at RH. I just want to thank everybody for allowing us the time tonight to present our amended design, and, you know, for your continued support as we've come up and gotten this project to where we have now. I also wanted to take a moment to point out the model that we had redone, and I don't know if everyone's had a chance, if you've had a chance to look at it, but we went ahead and had a new physical model made, and you can kind of move them back and forth to see, you know, in three dimensions, with the scale of the site and the entire site of the village, how we, you know, how much the scale of the building has shrunken, and how much we've kind of given back to the public amenity and the garden space on the ground floor. It also gives you a sense of how, with keeping the 46-feet foot height limit, we've worked to provide the restaurant on the roof and move some of the service spaces up to the roof so that we could allow for clear access through the east-west direction that goes from the parking lot into the mall. So Rob brought up innovation, and we always, you know, we're constantly looking at what we're doing, and, you know, unfortunately, the building process and the approval process goes a lot faster than, you know, we think. And we had a lot of success in Chicago, and as you know, that it really inspired our design on our previous design. And it was our first foyer into hospitality. We opened this beautiful space. It was better than anybody could have imagined. We really thought it was exactly what we wanted for Corder Madera, and to have that ground floor activation, and to have, you know, really the heart of our whole building be this hospitality space. As we, you know, continue to open other galleries with hospitality throughout last fall, when we were going through the approval process here, the unexpected happened, and we opened West Palm Beach. And in West Palm Beach, we, because we added the restaurant later in the game, we put it on the roof, and there was a lot of hesitation about that, about where that restaurant was positioned. We thought, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna have, nobody's gonna know it's up there. It's gonna be dead, you know. You know, we had all these, we had a lot of back and forth about if we were doing the right thing, and it turned out to be, you know, again, better than we thought. What it did was it really activated the entire gallery, and it brought people up through the whole building. It became a destination in and of itself, and I think the next slide, you can see this is the restaurant up on the roof, and what you don't see in this image are, is that bi-fold open in the back, and the views that go down Okeechobee, and you have these long views in West Palm Beach. And it really feels like you're bringing the outdoors in when you're up that high, and you're away from the bustle of the ground floor. So that, you know, that experience up there really helped inform this new design, and then this next slide here shows a view from the middle of what is the great room, you know, the large entry room on the east side of, or west side of our project, looking out towards the east. And on our previous design, we had shown a, you know, I should bring up the plan, actually. On our previous design, we had shown, I don't want to.
Take the mic with you.
Okay. It's helpful. We had shown restaurant pantry and then the kitchen space. So, you know, we had, through the rounds of all the public comment that we received and the presentations with you, and a lot of the outreach that Rob had done, we really took note that having the parking be off, being offset by the building was a big issue, and that people wanted to feel protected and a connection to that parking lot. So by opening up, by opening up the ground floor and moving everything to the roof, we're really allowing for not only like a beautiful view through, from what would be the east side, all the way through the building to the mall entry, but what it does is it allows people to park on that east side and walk through and feel connected. So we're actually adding that third node, and, you know, our building is that third anchor, and, you know, we've talked about in this in past meetings, but there's not like the front and the back. And now we're really allowing people to park out there and enter the mall through our building, and I really don't feel like that can be, you know, de-emphasized enough. The second, the other thing that we changed here was reducing the footprint, and we looked at the floor plans over and over, and by opening up things, we were able to look at our, you know, how we merchandise our assortment, and I know that's a lot of, you know, we use that terminology every day, but how we get all of our product in, how we create these inspiring spaces and make them work within a building, and we were able to get more efficient, and I think we have a, we really have a better building because of the work that we've done to really revisit it again. And we were able to reduce the square footage on the ground floor, and by doing that, we didn't, we didn't ask to have our area reduced and get more rent and, you know, negotiate with Mace Rich to have a reduced footprint. What we did is, we know this is our backyard, it's a really important building to us, and we said, "Why don't we create this ground floor park?" You're entering the site off, you know, the freeway, off the main ring road, you're going into the parking lot, and it's a bunch of cars, and there's traffic, so why not create this green hedge, and you'll see that, this line around here shows that hedge. So we have a hedge and trees, you know, heritage olive trees that surround the site, and the public's able to enter, and the amenities that we lost up on the roof are now present on the ground floor, so it's actually easier to access. So we'll have outdoor space here, we'll have outdoor furnishings. It really is described in our internal meetings as an oasis, a place where you can go in and you kind of lose the effect of being in a mall parking lot. And even when you're in the building and looking out, you're seeing vistas of greenery and people using the semedity, and you're not looking into a sea of cars. So that was really the thought here on that courtyard. So those were really, I think that really goes through all the changes. I mean, I have more slides here that show those views, and Phil did a good job of going through them, but the before and after in one slide, you can see, it's really the same building, it's just reduced a little, and the roof, and that restaurant is moved up to the roof. Even with the infill of the second floor plate and the third floor plate, we're still getting some reduction in square footage. Again, this view is, I think, a huge improvement. I mean, we've gone ahead and added a ton of greenery. You can see the hedge and olive trees coming up through there. You have an open pass-through on the ground there. You guys have all these in your packets. So this is a rendering of the rooftop café that we did, it was really quick. Unfortunately, these doors aren't open. The great part about having the restaurant up here as well is you do get that Mount Tam view, and, you know, all along, we knew, even on the, you know, being outside on the roof, that was gonna be the place that everyone wanted to be. We now have a wind-protected and weather-protected area that you can enjoy those views, and that we can all enjoy year-round. It's not gonna be, you know, a couple months out of the year, or sporadically through the fall and through the spring, where people are gonna be enjoying that, the vistas that we've been able to achieve up there. And that's it.
Thank you. The Architect of Record over here to speak to this, is he going to jump up and say anything regarding this project?
He's the Architect of Record.
Okay.
He's the designer.
This is the Architect of Record.
Okay.
Wayne Chubb.
All right.
I'm here to answer questions.
Okay. So.
I'll assume you want to be the face.
The only thing I would add to what's been said, and this will be really quick, is I've had the opportunity of sort of taking this idea and seeing it in its many forms, and so I'm familiar with all of these things, but one thing that this building does do is it's kind of started with Hollywood in terms of the two-story and the manner in which you come up through the building vertically to a rooftop, and it was wonderful, but everybody wanted more. This is the one that actually pulled it all together after experiences with restaurants in Chicago, and three other examples now that we've done. But this one also, I'll just add, adds a whole new sense of vertical transportation to the project, in that in between the kitchen at the back and the dining room at the front, this grand staircase just comes up and spirals to the top. So from the ground level, you actually can see all the way to the top and experience a much more friendly stairway that goes all the way to the top, rather than just relying on the two enclosed staircases. That's the main thing that I think is the big difference, and I agree that this will be the best example of food and beverage example for Restoration Hardware by far. So that's all I have to say. Wayne Chubb, who is the Architect of Record, is here tonight, if you have anything to say.
I don't have anything to say, but I'll go ahead and answer questions.
Okay. Okay, well, then, before we let all of you go, I assume Mr. Eddington would sort of be the spokesperson then, if I might address you to summarize for the public and for the commission, before we ask questions of you guys. So I think the first question that's in everybody's mind is, why are we here tonight to look at this again? And you guys have addressed it by saying, essentially, if I may, put words in your mouth, so to speak, that after consideration, you guys have come up with what you believe is a better project, essentially. Over.
Absolutely. We started with this incredible vision, and we believe that it's only getting better. By moving the restaurant to the rooftop, we're activating the rooftop and allowing an opportunity for the public to flow through the center of the building and still experience the outdoor gardens on the ground floor. We're incredibly proud of this new building.
Very good. So I think that, again, you know, I'm looking at the staff report, which describes many things, but there's a lot of verbiage. Break it down to the fact that the footprint is smaller, you've said that you've created a green ring around the building that you look out of and are aware of as you approach the building, and then you've created another entrance at the backside, the east side of the building, and made the café more of a destination. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. Many elements of the building have remained the same, our operations are the same, our construction process will be the same. We actually think that the, hopefully, the construction process can condense a little. And really, what we're looking at here is a change in the restaurant from the ground floor to the rooftop, adding this landscape area, so you see a, not a transition from asphalt to plaster, but a softening of landscape and greenery around the building, and an opportunity for us to still allow for the public amenity of it.
Fair enough. All right. Commissioners, Phyllis, do you have anything for Mr. Eddington or for the RH team?
No.
Okay. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, Rob, looking at Jennifer Larson's question about the possible loss of public access to the roof, as I look at the design
and an opportunity for us to still allow for the public amenity of it.
Fair enough. All right. Commissioners, Phyllis, do you have anything for Mr. Eddington or for the RH team?
No.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, Rob. Looking at Jennifer Larson's question about the possible loss of public access to the roof. As I look at the design plan, you've got the covered glass atrium roof, you know, cafe up there. But the, both sides of it have access to the public. Are they going to have chairs or lounges that could be accessed and used by the public without purchasing anything in the restaurant?
The answer is yes. What you'll notice is this was the original building that was approved and the only enclosed area was right here. We did have public access amenities on the east side as well as the west side. What we've done is we left both the south and the north to be open to the public. What we really felt like we were doing, again, we were, we had this experience in another store where we were activating and putting the restaurant on a roof. But we also feel like this turns into a 12-month rooftop. We all know that there's weather in Corder Madera and that at times, it can be windy that would impact the outdoor areas. We feel like with the cafe on the rooftop, that this can really benefit the public by being enclosed. We will have, all just in my lay terms, called accordion windows so that they would open and you would feel, as Mina said, the outdoor, where we can bring the outdoor. But we have left these two areas for the public as well.
Okay, thank you. The, one other concern I had was it seems like there's more vertical glass as a result of the rooftop. From the environmental impact report, does that environmental impact stance, was that have any effect as far as birds that, you know, we know is a problem as far as hitting glass structures at elevation? Is there any thing to mitigate the effect of that from the standpoint of bird impact?
I can...
We, actually, we've addressed that in other jurisdictions where we have had concerns about bird impact. Not necessarily with a restaurant on the rooftop. But there were different variations that we could utilize on the roof to create deviations for a bird from its eyesight. We continue to investigate those and study those.
Okay. But overall, I agree, this is a much better plan. I think following Michael Harlock's suggestion to have a flow-through worked really quite nicely from that standpoint. I was a little concerned from this floodproofing standpoint. I understand that these are still doors that are on the first floor that are going to open into that protected green area. And so, you want to have those as doors as opposed to windows that might have a higher base that would act for floodproofing.
That's correct. The idea would be that doors, people could utilize those and for the proper weather conditions, they would be open. And we would continue to go through the floodproofing process.
Okay. The, I want to assure you that the Flood Board is working diligently to protect this area from flooding, working to make sure we maintain the levees as well as the pump station and infrastructure. But that is, that is a concern of the town. That's all.
Thank you, Bob. Charles?
Just, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can address Mr. Bundy's couple of his comments.
Certainly, yeah.
One regarding the glass and the birds. I did have GHD Christine in particular look at that and she took a look at the total amount of glass. And I think if you look, the amount of glass is not significantly different. And I think a key component is the large trees that are going to be to the north and south of the dining area atrium to provide some protection and screening for the birds. And then, regarding flood protection and just looking, if you compare, the main change in areas is the north and south elevations where you go from, you know, numerous, a total of about eight windows and eight glass areas on the ground floor in the north and south elevations to approximately five. So, you go from five larger areas to protect as opposed to eight smaller areas. So, there's just two comments regarding birds and flooding.
Okay. No, I appreciated the details on the flood baffle and structure that you've got for that. That was nice to include.
Yeah, there are furniture element. No, just kidding. Charles, do you have any questions for RH here?
So, I had a question for the perimeter wall. You know, it's a green screen, but I couldn't find what material it is. Is it, is it a solid wall and then it has the screen over? Or is it some kind of wire mesh that then you're growing greens through? I just wanted to understand it a little bit more.
So, right now, it's, it is a boxwood hedge, so it'd be a trained hedge. We originally thought that we would have no structure at all, but I think we'll add some welded wire in the middle of it. So, we'll do welded wire and then a couple layers of boxwood. But we're still trying to figure out that detail. That's something we're just playing with right now. But there's no solid element to that hedge.
Right, so it's not going to be like plaster over cinder block or something?
No, no, no. It was, it's purely landscape. The idea of adding that welded wire was just to help structure and keep it straight and kind of give it something to train to.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, from a kind of concession standpoint, understanding what that public plaza is and how it's signed and just basically like, is it to invite customers in? Is it really like, you know, I think of the SFO ordinance about like lobby spaces that are truly public plazas during the day. And then, you shut them down. And I understand if you're going to put your furniture out there for people to use and enjoy, that you want to be able to protect it at night and that kind of, you know, thing.
Yeah, we have gates designed. So, on the, I can show you, actually, I can show you here, the plans. So, we have that hedge, as you can see here. And then, we have some solid pilasters with gates. So, the idea is after, you know, after we're closed for the evening, those gates would close and that would help to create some sort of security. Obviously, if somebody's very motivated to get over there, it's not going to be too difficult. But, you know, our thought is that we're not designing for the 1% of the public that's going to, you know, cause issues. We're going to, you know, do what we think is best for the design and then we'll deal with it as it comes. Yeah.
Is that it, Charles?
That was it.
Okay. A couple of silly questions perhaps, but if I might ask, it would appear that on the ground floor are the handicap restrooms? And then, as I go up to the third floor, there's, in our floor plans that we were given, a, looks like a single bathroom. Or is that the case that it's a multi-sex bathroom, so to speak, or?
They are unisex bathrooms, but Wayne, you could probably speak to this more. We've added a second stall. And so, when we promenade, we'll have one, two.
You will. All right.
Yeah, it's on here inside of what you see on the, on the right side of the screen or the south side. So, but it's all fully accessible on the first and the third floor.
Great. And you must have done some significant glass shading studies per Bob's commentary about glass and so forth to figure out how to keep this shaded and what kind of fabric and so forth goes on the interior of this glass. You know, you have an AC load that is not insignificant on warm days or a heat loss load in the wintertime. So, you're able to make the structure work within Title 24.
Yeah, I mean, of course, we're ongoing right now, but, you know, the initial studies, we're working with the system. Luckily, you can see on the exterior facades, the first, you can see there's the black awnings also provide a shading on all the facades. And then, on the third floor, of course, we're trying to do the balance of making it, of course, meet code, but create that open feeling of, as Rob mentioned, the accordion walls and bring the indoors and outdoors. So, we're working that balance.
Okay. And I guess finally, there's not a change in the actual number of parking spaces? Or there is, there are more spaces?
No, that's correct. The perimeter, the island, if I want to say, the curb line is maintained as the same.
Okay, so it's the exact same, not more, not less?
Correct.
Right. All right. Thank you. Anyone else with anything further for the staff before we go to public comment?
No, I just, when you spoke about the third floor, what came to mind was some kind of a scrim as far as the sun coming through and heating it up too much.
Otherwise, it won't work. All right, thank you very much. We will now ask for commentary. Everybody has three minutes. If you would, say who you are, we request that. But if not, please go ahead and speak.
Chair Chase, Vice Chair Metcalf, Director Wolf, and members of the planning commission. My name is Lucy McPherson and I have lived in Corder Madera all my life. Every week, my family spends time at the village and town center. I was very excited about the new, I was very excited about the architecture and destination of the RH gallery that was previously approved. Now, the revised design is even more exciting and generous to Corder Madera. I know I'm young, but I understand that stores sell product and selling takes lots, and selling takes lots of space. What store owner decides to make their building smaller so they can give the town a landscape park open to the public? Well, it says to me that RH cares about our community. Also, the decision to make the back of the building a beautiful entrance similar to the front is both really elegant symmetry and efficient path for the public. Finally, the ability, finally, the ability to experience both magnificent views of the bay and Mount Tam of Pius while an elegant glass cafe protected from the cold and wind is breathtaking. This feature will become a defining destination for Corder Madera that no one in the world can duplicate. How great is that? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say that I was, I support this project? I do.
That was the implication.
David McPherson, also Corder Madera. You know, I didn't think that I could be more excited and impressed with the architecture and amenities that were planned in the initial iteration that was approved. And all I can say is I'm a huge fan of the restaurant going on the roof. When I was growing up, we would travel from the peninsula and we'd go to two destinations, you know, for restaurants. And one was the, I think it was the Embarcadero Restaurant that had in the, what was the name of that? Hyatt Regency with the, you know, glassed top deck, you know, and then, I think, the top of the Mark. And I don't think it's hyperbole to suggest that this is really going to be a destination for people. I mean, the views of Mount Tam from that restaurant are just going to be spectacular. And I think it's going to be a regional meeting space. And I don't, I mean, it's so obvious by reducing the footprint and having that landscape in a linear park that's absolutely beautiful and the pass-through for the public, it just really ties it together. They didn't stop innovating and I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. By the way, what grade is your daughter president of?
I'm in sixth grade currently, but I only have about left until, until I go to summer and then seventh grade.
Great, thank you. Who else is going to jump up there? Mr. Harlock or anybody else?
Lucy's a tough act to follow.
I'm Margaret Bandell, resident of Corder Madera. I think that the restaurant on top is beautiful and I think it's an improvement. I, and I read a little bit or a couple of sentences in the report about any effect that the lights or the noise might have on other people shopping or using the mall or, I don't know, residents around there late at night. I didn't see very much about that.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else? We've got plenty of time here, but Michael?
Is Peter something that short meetings?
Well, I don't, Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood. I don't really have a lot to add. The young lady said it so beautifully. This is all an improvement from what we saw before and what we saw before was excellent. I think this is going to be the handsomest building, commercial building in Corder Madera. And it makes sense, it really makes sense to have a walkway in the rain, another way to access the mall. I'm reminded, we, I worked, when I worked in retail, we did the San Francisco Center. And the developer at the time, with Nordstrom on Market Street, and at the time, the developer really was taking a chance and putting Nordstrom at the top of that building, obviously of a different scale. But it worked beautifully in terms of drawing people up using the first circular elevator in North America, I think. Escalator, sorry. Anyways, I won't say more. I think the restaurant on the top is going to be a hit. You know, Nordstrom has done it, Neiman Marcus, you know, there's other excellent examples. This is a totally different experience. So, I think the consultant team has done an excellent job, Rob, and as the architect, who I highly regard. And so, that's it.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Eddington, would you care to address Margaret Bandell's question about?
I think staff can, staff can address that.
All right. So, with that said, if no one else is going to jump up there, then we'll close the public section of this hearing and ask staff to address that issue about...
And I apologize, I didn't mean if, I didn't mean to cut Rob off there if he wanted to add something as well. But there were some specific things, I think, in the staff report and in the resolution that we could speak to on that.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, in terms of, in terms of noise and lighting on the upper level, we do have two new conditions of approval, which are on page nine of your staff report. Of course, just overall, that the, that the building will need to, you know, comply with the noise ordinance of the town of Corder Madera. In addition to that, condition of approval number five stating that the restaurant shall be, one hour after closing of the restaurant, the light shall be dimmed to reduce to a minimum level needed for safety. And so, that the, to minimize any night sky effects with lighting, reduce lighting to the bare minimum. And then, also, if we just, given this is such a large space, we're anticipating that there may, the area may be used for a large event. And if it is such an event, though the applicant has clearly stated that the upper level will not be rented out. But if it was, you know, a event, you know, an entire party using the restaurant on the top floor, that they would notify the town and, of course, they would notify Mace Rich. And so, we would just be aware and that tenants wouldn't be disturbed and there wouldn't be any impact to neighboring residences with additional noise.
Very good. Perhaps you might also summarize for those here and watching about the intended construction schedule for this thing? That the parking lot is intended to proceed immediately, so to speak? Or very soon, is that correct?
I can, best I can, we're in constant conversation with both Mace Rich and Restoration Hardware regarding the gravel lot, the building and the parking lot around the building. At this point, the gravel lot is intended to go first in the early, to begin early, late spring, early summer, and with the building beginning in the summer. Certainly, that those dates need to be more ironed out. But currently, we have the permit for the gravel lot that is being reviewed by the town.
All right, so you have drawings in hand regarding the gravel lot?
The gravel lot, correct.
All right, okay. And I, something flew through my mind there for a moment, but I think that... Mr. Eddington would like to...
Yeah, I'd just like to add a few more comments on the concerns about...
Yeah, I'd just like to add a few more comments on the concerns about lighting and noise.
We have to open public hearing again, so that's what will happen here, so that's fine.
Okay. So we do have a business relationship with Maesrich, our landlord, and what we like to say is that's probably the first party that's going to oversee our lighting and our noise. We do have restrictions with them. They have concerns about other tenants, and they'll certainly be watching us. And again, this restaurant and this rooftop is really meant to accommodate the community, and if we have, if there are any concerns, we always have an open door and open phone, certainly an open relationship with Phil. If he hears things that, please let us know. But we did review the conditions of approval with our executives, and we also reviewed them with Maesrich, and we're agreeable to all those.
All right, very good. Anybody else care to have any further comment now that we reopen the public hearing? Seeing none, then we'll close it, take it back up here to the dais. And I'll start with you, Phyllis, for your thoughts on this project.
Well, I've always liked the project, and I've always been in support of the design, which I thought was beautiful, and you've made it more beautiful, Jim. You've done a wonderful job of taking a great concept and making it even better. And I think, Michael, you said it was going to be the commercial building for Corder Madera. I'd like to expand that. I think it's going to be for the entire county. This is going to be a building that is going to be equal to what we see with Frank Lloyd Wright Civic Center design and I am pay's beautiful job with the Bucks Center on Aging, or whatever they're calling it now. But this is an outstanding building. It's been improved. I think the park around it is kind of the finishing touch that was needed. I don't know if any of us realized it to begin with, but now that we see it, it just really makes it look well. I think we should let the community know there will be seating down there for those who are concerned about losing some seating upstairs. Sometimes you just like to sit outside and not look at the view, maybe read a book. So I certainly approve it, and I'm anxious to see it go ahead, and I hope maybe you consider doing what Nordstrom's did when they opened many years ago, and that was have a beautiful black tie party, so people can come and see it. No, it's something that's really worth showing off, and you should be proud to do it.
Thank you. Dr. Bundy, your input, please.
Any concerns I had have been answered. I think it's a great project. I support it.
Mr. Lee.
So I was surprised you came back, and I guess I'm reminded of some of the discussions that we had, you know, with the public, and I'm thoroughly impressed that you came back, you know? I mean, you could have just taken it and run with it, and I think some of the things are related to the success of the business, right? And models where you've seen other things, and that's something that I think the community really cares about, right? There were concerns about, you know, is this model going to work and everything like that, and that you, even if you could have proceeded, have chosen to even make it more successful. And so I just find that highly commendable and exciting, and I do think that that restaurant's going to be a lot better upstairs and, you know, just gives a lot more viability for the commerce that's going to happen there, and the public park around it and bringing the beautiful Restoration Hardware kind of outdoor furniture out where the public has easy access, I think, is a really nice gesture. So I'm excited, and I'm glad that, you know, it's only getting better and improving the kind of relationship to the parking lot and the overall flow of the campus and everything like that. So I also could make the findings, and I'm very excited to see it go up, so.
All right. Thank you, Charles. I think it's a vast, it's a significant improvement because the reconsideration just brings about so many things that are very important. And as a sort of side comment to that, because I think it's very obvious it's a good project, is that between Maesrich and between RH, I hope that the involvement in trying to keep the center vital doesn't stop with adding this to the project there, right? And we've brought up the point of the potential for the crossing between the malls or across the highway and so forth, and that Maesrich will also look at that and continue to look at it, as will RH, and stand for those improvements for that bikeway across the freeway and figure out, as a member of the community, how to make it, you know, really involved and active in the community. Getting a commercial building built is one aspect, but I think staying present will also be really important. So that would be the end of my commentary, and I would entertain a resolution, or motion for a resolution approval.
Do you want to do it? There's no number or anything like we usually have?
Number on the resolution?
Yeah.
It's at the top there.
Okay. I see. Corder Madera Planning Commission Resolution Number 18-005, a resolution of the planning commission of the town of Corder Madera approving permit amendment PL-2018-0026-P-A to modify the precise plan, which includes design review and amend the conditional use permit of the previously approved RH Gallery building at the village of Corder Madera.
So it's a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
I second.
And if I could just, if I could just interject, that this is the revised resolution that you received as email at your places and is also in the back.
Got it. All right.
Do you have to mention the additional approvals that were added as I lose my voice? It's okay?
Yeah, as long as you're approving the revised resolution.
Okay, fine.
And you are second?
I second it.
All right, Mr. Lee. All right, so then we take a vote. We'll call.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye. So there you have it, gentlemen. Now you really have to go to work.
Yes.
And I will read the appeal rights.
Yes, please.
Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the commission may be appealed to the town council within five, within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department for a fee of $300.
Okay. Thank you. And let's take a few minute break here while we clear the room.
Thank you.
All right, we're back on recording. Next out on our agenda is item 6A, the amendments to the Planning Commission rules and procedures. Review and possible approval of recommendation revising Planning Commission rules and procedures. And needless to say, this is in a long, raw process, but Mr.
This is the long-awaited return of proposed amendments to the Planning Commission rules and procedures. I've tried to outline in the staff report some of the background here for your information to show how we, where we were and how we got from the last amendment that was approved by the council in August of 2016 to now a fairly significant rewrite of sections of the Planning Commission rules and procedures. Planning Commission did start the process of taking a fresh look at this back in July of 2017, and then September of 2017. That's, if you'll recall, had to do with, it's listed in the, in the report, but some of the time changes, some of the changes, talking about annual organization meetings, some clarifications, some about clarifying the distribution of materials for the public at Planning Commission meetings, et cetera. It's in the report. So after that, so happened that the town council was also reviewing its rules and procedures and on the recommendation of the town manager and town attorney, rewrote some of its, made some changes to its rules and procedures in the fall of 2017. Ultimately, they adopted new rules and procedures for themselves on December 5th. And so it was, we were sort of on the advice of the town manager, but also it made sense for us at the time to wait to see if there were areas where we could create some consistency between the two documents to the extent practical. So that's what was done. Subsequently, since Commissioner Metcalf was gracious enough in the first place to help us work on this, we continued to staff along myself and the town attorney and assistant town of Judith and Peter. We all sort of sat down and looked at it again more recently, and the attachment one, sort of the proposed amendments that you can see in the, with track changes versions in attachment one is what sort of we all came to as what to put forth tonight at this Planning Commission meeting. There is one area that is still, deserves some attention and discussion that relates to placing an items on the agenda. There's an explanation of sort of the previous changes to this section in the staff report, and some, I think, also some background about how it's worded and was changed at the town council's rules and procedures in December on the advice of the town manager and town attorney, and what existed in the town council's rules and procedures since about 2003 before then, and why some changes were recommended in December of this year. Those same changes are recommended again for the Planning Commission rules and procedures by the town attorney, but I, this is, I think, a point of, frankly, a point of some disagreement here from our conversations with Commissioner Metcalf, and I think we wanted to make sure that there is a discussion amongst all the commission members about the issues, this particular issue of placing an item on the agenda. You know, it's, I tried to, we tried to spell it out in the staff report as clearly as possible, so we wouldn't have to repeat it verbally here, so, you know, I'm happy to answer questions about anything in the staff report or any other particular items in the changes that were, are put forth tonight for the commission to look at and ultimately make a recommendation to the town council. The process ultimately, this goes to the town council, and the town council has to adopt the Planning Commission rules and procedures. So with that, I'll end there, and happy to answer questions of staff, but at the end of the day also, this is obviously the Planning Commission's rules and procedures, so look forward to hearing from you all as well.
Thank you, Adam. I would like to first thank Ms. Metcalf for the heavy lifting she's done with this to keep track of it, propose it, help write the council rules, and then come back for this. So there's been extraordinary hours that she's put into this, rather graciously, selflessly, and with great diligence.
And we will not be examining it again. We're supposed to do an annual basis. We will not be doing it again in 2018.
So.
I promise you, and you promise me.
This might be for the, till 2020, or 2050, or 2060, I don't know. That said, to make a point of the one issue about agendizing an item that is your concern, would you please say what that is that you would like to have in there, and then we'll talk about that?
This is something that actually existed for the council, starting, I think you said, 2003, but it's something I believe in, and it's something that's done in other communities and so with that. Government exists for the benefit of the people, not the opposite way. People who are part of government are representing those needs of their communities, their people, and the people should have a right to say they would like an issue taken up. That doesn't mean they're going to get their way and the issue is going to be, the response is going to be what they want, but at least it should come up. And if it's something that would take a lot of time, it should at least come up on the agenda where an explanation is given, as we don't have an answer now, certain research will have to be done, or come back. I mean, as I said to Teresa and Judith, and poor Adam's heard it too many times, I didn't march when I was in college, I didn't do sit-ins and all those things, so free speech wasn't important. If you go back to what happened in Berkeley, and I'm not going to tell you the whole story of it, I'll just say that two members of my family were involved, or brother and sister. The sister was out there with Mario Savio, and her younger brother was there telling people to go back to class, so we are rather an interesting family. But it's important that people have a right to say something, to ask for an item to be on the agenda. And I don't like the idea of changing it now, that if somebody wants something, it has to go, well, I guess it would go to you, because it says the town manager is the way they changed the council stuff. And the town manager decides whether or not he could solve it, whether or not he should discuss it with the mayor, and this is certainly saying nothing against Todd, whomever is mayor. And that person who asked to have it handled in public wanted it to come up in public so others could hear it. And I think that those of us who are in a position to help make decisions have an obligation to allow the public to hear something if they wish to, and that's what my problem is with it. You know, this isn't something that happens at every meeting. This is something that might happen twice a year. I mean, there is a man who, for what, the past three or four years, has brought up again and again during open time about the gas blowers. And because he doesn't get any satisfaction of it coming on the agenda, the council being discussed the way he wants, he keeps on writing letters to the editor of the IJ, which doesn't get him what he wants and doesn't make the town look good either. So all I am saying is, the very few times that people come before the, well, I can't do anything about the council, but come before our commission and say, I would like a certain item on the agenda, that every effort should be made to do it. What I did do was change the dates. I think it was originally, it had to be done in three, within three weeks. Well, I changed it to four weeks because there is no meeting three weeks after the request is made. I also said the request should be in writing, and if, there should be some backup materials. I mean, it's not something you don't take seriously. You just don't do it because somebody wants it. You make them give you a good reason for it. But if it's something that comes up and Adam looks at and says, we can't give you an answer now, there's some work that has to be, but it is set in a public meeting, it's on the agenda for it to be reported, and he'll say, we'll have to come back in three months, but you have acknowledged that you are serving the benefit of the public. And I think I've covered, if you have a question for me to explain better what I mean, ask me, Adam.
So if I may then, so 4.2.2, placing an item on the agenda, it says that members of the public and/or commissioners may request to add an item to the agenda that is directly related to the business of the commission, da-da-da-da-da, by submitting a request to the planning director or his or her designee. Such requests are to be submitted in writing. So are you saying that this disallows a person at open time or in their commentary during a specific item cannot bring that to the planning director's attention?
No.
No.
So, just so, for clarification, 4.2.2 in the attachment one, that's the language that was adopted by the council on the recommendation of the commission back in 2016. Since that time, that has been changed for the town council, and the town attorney and manager are now recommending that it be changed for the Planning Commission as well to be consistent with what the town council has done.
And the council, go ahead.
Yeah, no, the council, I mean, so. Yeah, no, the council, I mean, so the bottom of page three and the top of page four, I don't think there's any, I think what's being.
Oh, you didn't put in my change.
No, I didn't put in any, I left it as is in 4.2.2.
See, I wrote 4.2.2. That's mine after looking to see what other towns did and other boards.
Well, it was based on the town council.
On the town council, but I then checked to see how others addressed it. And I made it a little bit tighter in the fact that you could ask for it at open time. But when you come and ask for it at open time, you really, I mean, you ought to back it up in writing. And I changed it to 28 days.
Right.
Because that would be two meetings since we meet every two weeks. 21 days doesn't make sense. That was in the council rules from 2003.
So item 7.4 on the council rules and regulations is the paragraph that the council or the town attorney would like to see us adopt, is that correct?
Yeah, detachment two, correct.
And so Phyllis, that doesn't satisfy your.
No.
And what would be your request to be different about that paragraph?
You're talking about 7.4?
Yes.
I want our 4.2.2 with the change to 28 days prior to the meeting. I don't want it to be up to a member of the staff. And by the way, this, both mine and the one that Teresa wrote, has to do with the request from a member of the commission or the council. And I certainly would think, especially at the council level, there should be more respect shown to the request of a council member. But, but it just makes a lot of work that I think is unnecessary. And at the meeting, I saw it online, the meeting where that came up, that part of the meeting, and where Teresa was wanting to do this, and Sloane Bailey asked, well, what would be an example of something that we couldn't have an answer for? And I think they're still set three weeks at the time. And her response was, and I've discussed this with Teresa, I'm not saying something behind her back, was, well, if people came and they wanted to convert apartments to, I think she said a co-op, or condos, and that certainly couldn't be done in three weeks. And I just think that's ridiculous because nobody expects it to be done in three weeks, but they expect, they ask for it to have the start of a discussion, at least saying, this is what it takes to do it, these are the steps we'd have to take, et cetera. That could be done, I say, I'll use the three weeks that they had. And this is where I disagree with her. I would hope, I mean, this is going to be a vote of the commission. I would hope they would vote from my language rather than Teresa's. And as they say, if it came up twice a year, it would be a lot. If it came up once a year, it might even be a lot. But it should be, members of the public should feel they have a right to get something on an agenda. It's that important to them. It's important that we who represent government listen to them.
I understand that, and I agree with you that that is important, and I don't think that 28 days is some kind of goal that can't be modified. But, so what you are saying though, in your language, is that anything can be placed on the agenda without a due process of review, so.
The, that's what you have the 28 days for, to take a look at this. Now, if somebody comes and, it has to be something within our purview. If somebody wants to talk about the starving people in Rwanda, something, that's not going to happen. But that two meeting, that 28 days, that two, the time of two meetings, would be, it could be a simple problem that maybe staff could review it in that time.
I understand.
If it isn't, staff could at least do a cursory look at it to come back and say, this is going to take longer than just, you know, two meetings to fix. We're going to have to put this on the agenda at a later date because work, you know, has to be done.
So, and I think that's all fine, you know, that it works that way, but you're not suggesting that staff have any way of codifying the necessity for that item to be placed on the agenda or evaluating it whether it should be placed on the agenda. You're saying it must be placed on the agenda after the appropriate review is done.
If the staff comes back, using your word, I can't even think of an example of that staff could do. But if staff comes back and says, this is not an appropriate thing for the commission to be involved in, there's your answer.
So, but that's not, say that somebody came in and said that we must discuss the housing bill, you know, immediately. And so that would give staff four weeks to sit down and prepare a report on it, when really, you know, that is our purview, but do we want to be discussing the state legislature housing bill and the impacts on the community right now that it may or may not have? Somebody would be perfectly within their right then to stand there and say, I want this on the agenda for discussion. Should we have that discussion, you know, regardless of whether we're ready to do that or not? Or that someone says, I want to examine all the C2 zoning for, you know, what's contained within it, and I want to report on it, and I want to do that. So those kinds of things you're saying could be brought before the.
That what comes should be logical.
Well, that means that staff has to have the right to say it does or does not belong.
So I've read both statements, and fundamentally, there's a few different things. One is, in ours, it is only to the staff to review. In the council, it goes to the mayor as well as the staff for final approval. So that would include the chair to make sure that, like, and so.
Sorry, when you say our, just for clarity, when you say ours?
The planning commissions.
4.2.2.
4.2.2. So I'm looking, in my understanding of what this discussion is, is the town council has approved a certain process, and they specifically call it the request for public to place items on the agenda. Ours also addresses commissioners, right? So, but in general, in this one, it's that it goes to the staff for review, and that's the only process with the, so with the planning commission. With the, with the town council, it goes to staff, but then it also comes in front of the elected representative to review as well. So there's, there's kind of like a public representative oversight. And so I think that's one of the differences that I see, because I don't see the engagement of the commission to make a decision whether they feel it's appropriate at the chair level.
Well, and one, one thing I just want to point out, you know, we have, there's always a, well, actually, one of the proposed changes as well, is that we put on the agenda under, for our agenda, the planning commission agenda, 7.4, that specifically talks about future agenda items that the commission may collectively wish to request that go on the item.
But Teresa just came up with that, that never existed before.
No, I understand, I understand. We had a tentative agenda items for the next meeting. I think in her view, that was, would be an appropriate time, 7 little 4, to basically allow for if somebody came at open time, then there'd be a designated time for the commission to decide whether that should go forward. But, but I do understand there are some, yeah, there's, that's one fundamental difference is, the current 4.2.2 does actually just say, they submit a request to planning director rather than to the commission itself, right?
Yeah, but look what it also says.
And then it goes on to the agenda, yeah, I get it.
No, I'm saying what Teresa wrote that you may have missed, maybe because I've discussed it so much with her.
Right.
It says, it goes to the town manager, will work with the requester. To review and determine if a resolution could be reached prior to bringing the item before the council for consideration. In other words, the town manager can make that decision that it doesn't come before the council. Read the wording, this is what Teresa wrote. And once that evaluation is complete.
So I think that wording, in my mind, it's not an exclusionary wording. My interpretation of it is that it's because sometimes the public doesn't know the right process or way to basically address issues that they might have with the town. So the town manager reviews the request to see if it's appropriate for agendization, right? And then if it is, then it's brought to the council if they feel like it's within their purview to discuss, right? So I guess that's just how, you know, it's a semantic interpretation.
And then if the town manager thinks it should come, it could come to the council. See, I heard it all discussed at the meeting where this was voted on, you know, I watched on the TV, whatever they call what they do. And then they decide, you know, if placement is warranted and the appropriate meeting date to bring the thing forward, well, this guy who's been whining about, I shouldn't say whining, he's got a good point, about the gas blowers for the past four or five years, has a good point, you know, how long are you going to keep them waiting? Now they've got, as a matter of fact, in the Chronicle, is that what they call it?
Quartermodera Chronicles.
Yeah, the Quartermodera Chronicles, there's a survey asking you about the noise from blowers. It only took three or four years for this issue to raise this point. No, this essentially was, and you can go back and look at the tape from that meeting, where Teresa is saying that the public cannot dictate, and that was her word, dictate what should be on the agenda. And I say that everything we do is for the benefit of the public. And, yeah, we're going to get some, as I say, once a year, somebody asks for something, I see no reason why consideration cannot be given to it. If it can be responded to in four weeks, great. If it's going to take longer time, you tell them, but at least they know they are being listened to and they're concerned.
So I understand about public engagement, I just feel like the council meetings and also the planning commission meetings are a limited time engagement, and so therefore we can only take so many discussion topics in each meeting. And so therefore, they're just trying to create language that basically prioritizes that, and when it's appropriate to discuss it in a public forum or do it at other times of daily operation of the city, I guess, is how I would see that, but.
Well, I, that's a benevolent side of it. The fact is, the way it reads is that they can stop it at the town manager's door, and it can, it may not get beyond that just because of whatever his disposition is or such, so forth. So what I'm, what I would propose, Phyllis, is that if it said that such item would come back to the planning director and bring to the commission as a part of the future agenda, you know, to discuss that with the commission, right? So Adam would then say, here, Michael Harlock has brought forth this question about ADU units that he really wants to address, then the commission could take a vote on it, and then it would be publicly aired, we'd have a process that would state and give the applicant, the requestor, a opportunity to understand where it lands in either the planning department's process, or whether even as a commission, we feel we want to address it. If that were placed in here.
That's what it was about, that's what I wrote. And I don't know what the changes are in the sense that if they came back, and I'll use the 21 days because it's only there in front of me, that's what I'm trying to say, it comes back within that period in which the, Michael Harlock is told what you just said. If it cannot be done, then it should be up, but it is addressed. And they're told that, they can be told that time is needed to research the issue, it is not going to be solved now.
So I guess what I hear is, it's like public comment on a specific application, but it's for overall procedures and process within the planning commission specifically in this instance, right? And that there needs to be some kind of public disclosure about those kind of comments that come in about the way that the agendization happens. And, you know, it, that's what I'm generally getting a sense of, is that it's the same as public comment, but about, you know, items that maybe need to discuss, right? And I think that personally, that sounds.
Adam, where is, I made more changes than the 21 days. I didn't bring all the stuff I had because I thought you were going to have the change I had. I can go, it's on my computer, it's, I even have it now keyed to my desktop, so I just push to see what it is. I would, I think.
There is one other thing in that, we had agreed that I was going to leave it exactly as it is currently adopted. I know there is one other change besides 28 days. It was in that, but I don't think it was substantive. It was, it was essentially what you're saying anyways.
Well, what I would make a suggestion is, do everything but 4.2.2, and let me see what I wrote, you know, what the changes were that I made. And then we can discuss it with me, knowing, and even listening to some of the things that were said tonight, maybe I might add a sentence or something, but, but not adopt the council one, because I cannot support that in any way, shape, or form. As I say, we didn't have the free speech movement at Berkeley and the sit-ins at Columbia and stuff. So government tells the people, you have no right to be heard.
Well, I think the one difference I heard between what, Phyllis, you were saying, and then what Charles brought up, was that under the current 4.2.2, there's a requirement that it's actually on the agenda as an agendized item. And then under the revised request for public to place items on an agenda, it, it may not get on an agenda. However, I think one additional thing, what Charles was saying would be, there should be or may be an appropriate place, for example, under the future agenda items, where that request is brought under that agenda item called future agenda items, and then the commission would have the opportunity to sort of just make the decision about whether that request goes on to a future agenda or not.
But I was responding to what Peter said, which was not quite the same. It was similar to what Charles said, but Peter's was more, I don't know.
I'm going to do the thing that is difficult.
You're going to bring in a phone?
Version that we're not allowed to do, but this is what you wrote, I believe.
That's fine.
And, and it can be, it is 4.2.2. Members of the public and/or commission may request to add an item to the agenda that is directly related to the business, et cetera, et cetera. This is where, it's the same. Such requests are to be submitted in writing, including appropriate supporting documents, that's at least 28 days prior to the meeting, during which the item is sought to be considered. The item may be deferred to a later date with the concurrence of the person submitting the item if more time is needed to appropriately address the issue. So that doesn't say anything about a review or the commission or even the planning director determining whether it is appropriate or not. And that would be the only thing that I think would daylight it. And if, and if somehow that was put in there, that, a simple sentence to that effect, that would allow for the planning director to bring it to the commission within that timeframe for consideration, for agendization. You know, that would be then saying to the requester that we got it, we're considering it, the director said, shall we, and should we? And then there's a process of review of that item, rather than just saying, yes, we have to consider your item, we have to put an agenda on it, and the staff has to write a report.
Does that, what, does what Peter say respond to what your concern is, Charles?
That's absolutely in line with what I've been discussing.
Okay. Why don't we try to draft a sentence right now and get this thing over with?
So just for the, for clarification, because what I thought I heard from Charles and.
I get it, all right, go ahead.
And, and Chair Chase is that it then goes to the commission to determine whether or not you'll have the discretion. So it is a little different because then the person may be told. So, it is a little different because then the person may be told, commission's not going to hear this matter.
No, or.
Is that correct?
I think it would, my suggestion would be it would go on the future.
The commission will not hear it at this time, yeah.
Is it mandatory or discretionary? That's what I think I'm not hearing. I thought what I, I'm not putting words in any, but maybe Commissioner Lee and Chair Chase can clarify what their intent is, because what I thought I heard was some sort of discretion that the commission would have whether to agendize it in the future or not. And I'm not sure that that's what is being proposed.
And that could be done by a may or may not address the issue and may refer to the planning director to include or not include. We could say yes or no, or we don't want to consider it.
Right, right. I think what you're saying is that a request, let's say, a request is made either during a commission meeting at open time or basically to myself or to one of the commission members outside of one of our formal meetings. The next step would be to discuss that, sorry, with the commission. I would recommend at item seven, four, which is the time in our normal agenda, discuss future agenda items. And then if the majority of the commission members agree that it should be placed on an agenda, future agenda, we can discuss when and, and it would also allow staff to sort of come to that meeting prepared to say, we may need some more time or certain issues, but you could discuss when or bring it back for, again, a consideration for another future agenda item.
We shouldn't use the 21 days or the 28 days. It should be at the next meeting after a person makes a request. Then you could put it on for the commission.
I still think, I still think, I still think we need some time because if somebody makes it right before the meeting.
Okay, so if it's the 28 days prior to the meeting, and at that time, the item will come back under future board.
Seven, four.
Under, will come back.
Seven proposed for future agenda items.
Under consideration?
Yeah, consider, it will be under, so routine and under other matters in our agenda is where it's every, it's basically a report. We're talking about tentative agenda for the next meeting and then, and then future agenda items that the commission would like to see on the agenda or not, you know? And then that would be the time where we would discuss that particular.
Right, and we could respond why or why not.
Yes.
We might feel it's appropriate or that we can respond to it or whatever.
And as the planning director or staff may inform, the commission has to, yeah, feasibility, appropriateness, et cetera. So, and the commission may or may not then elect to agendize the item.
Yep.
Or return it to the director for inaction to the.
But it will come up, the idea is it comes up in public, the person hears his or her item being discussed in the sense of whether or not it should proceed before the commission. You know, not that it's going to be answered that night, but whether or not it should proceed through the normal rules and procedures of the commission.
And I think importantly, and maybe this is a question for Judith, but that section, number seven, is not open for public comment generally. That's in our agenda when we're talking about tentative agenda items. That to me is a big difference whether or not, because if we put something on agenda, we have to open it up for public comment normally. But here, I would hope that this would be purely as we do with reports.
Seven point four.
Right, under seven, under seven point four, it would be a commission discussion. It wouldn't be that members of the public could, you know, lobby. They would have already made their request. You certainly could allow for someone, you know, three minutes to be heard on it, you know, if, but that would be before the commission makes their final decision, but it would be for a discussion primarily.
Well, if they don't get the answer they like, they can make the same request the next day, and we'd have to, and we'd have to put it back on in.
So, again, I would agree with Adam is that generally, seven, a subsection, oh, yeah. So, anyway, under routine and other matters, there'd be an item for future for the commission to discuss what items, if any, should be placed on future agenda items. And I think that that's the real distinction that needs to be clarified in 4.2.2 is it's not mandatory as it, as it currently reads, that it's the commission's discretion whether to place it on a future agenda, and if so, when. And not mandated that it has to be with the concurrence of the person submitting the item if it's going to take longer.
You know, one option to how to include that, and I'm just, maybe to add, so, for example, I think one of the things that's where the council has adopted their new rule regarding request from the public to place items on the agenda, that may be one option for the member of the public to request, but the, you could add to that just what we talked about as well, say.
No, but theirs is it could be stopped by the town manager or, in this case, you without us ever having a say.
But that's why there's another route to do it.
And that's why I wouldn't acknowledge that.
So, I just want a clarification, I'm sorry. So, are you suggesting that we both adopt the pathway for, that's spelled out for the council but for agendas for the planning commission and then also have a planning commission specific route? Like, because I think that that's legitimate, that if they see, if the public sees that the planning commission or the director is somehow not hearing what's being discussed, that they have an outlet through the council and through the town manager to also bring it to the attention of the council. Like, that's what I'm hearing? And I don't, I don't know.
Going in the opposite direction.
Not involving the council, it's just involving the planning director and the commission.
That's for us specifically, but like, what I'm saying is we could also adopt both their resolution as one thing that we could start getting agendas and then also internally with planning commission.
No, their commission stops it, in our case with Adam. I mean.
Yeah, I was trying to, it wouldn't be the exact same language. It would, it would still, it would replace out, replace the council with commission, take out the town manager with planning director, and then, yeah.
Just say.
Both pipelines for the same, for this place, yeah.
The item will come back in 28 days to be placed under seven point four, whatever it says.
To be discussed under future agenda items.
Look, we all have different styles and ways of doing things. When Teresa wrote the ethics thing for the council, it was four pages with the preamble. I turned around and wrote it for Todd to bring to the council, and it was two thirds of a page. We, she had a lot of stuff in it with the I leave of, I leave some of it amorphous so people can make decisions rather than worry about dotting every I and crossing every T and all of that. And I think you've got to have, people feel they have an opening to be heard and it's not hidden.
We're creating that possibility.
We're just trying to figure out.
With what Adam was saying, but not with what the council says.
No, and so I think we've got it in there. So, I would just request then that you come back with a sentence for seven, or 4.2, or 2.?
Yeah, 4.0, it would be a revision, I guess, to 4.2.2 with what we had just described.
We could take out the last sentence and put in a sentence related to what you said.
So, what that would do is I foresee, say, somebody come back from the seminal project and say, I want to have a neighborhood distance thing on the agenda. They could come back and say, the house across the street from Bob is, you know, that's a view ordinance that I object, you know? We can't have that kind of permission just to throw it on there. And I think if the commission then gets an opportunity to address it and the applicant hears that it's being addressed.
The consideration.
Right, you know, and then that's fine, but that's the only way it daylights it, and then it's part of the record, it's on the notes and minutes and all that.
That satisfies me.
So, are you, do you want proposed language now so that you can actually consider it? Or are you thinking that you?
If you can spit it out.
Why don't you, why don't we let?
Let's try this, okay? So, if I'm understanding on 4.2.2, it would read.
Take out the last sentence and have it read 28 days.
Just saying, just starting, members of the public and/or commissioners may request to add an item to the agenda that is directly related to the business of the commission as defined under Article 1.1, purpose of commission, by submitting a request to the planning director or his or her designee, period. Such requests are to be submitted in writing, including appropriate supporting documents and information, if desired, at least 20, at least 28 days prior to the meeting during which the item is sought to be considered, period.
Right.
The item will be placed.
Okay, it will be placed.
On the agenda under the commission's discussion of.
It's this, I mean, it's.
Future agenda items.
Of future agenda.
Period. The commission shall have the discretion to determine whether that item shall be placed on a future agenda item, a future agenda common referred to the planning director.
Wait, the commission shall have the discretion.
To determine whether to place the item on a future agenda for discussion, comma, refer the matter to the planning department or director.
Director.
Planning director, comma, or determine that the item shall not be heard.
Is not appropriate at this time.
Will just, shall not be heard by the planning commission, period. Just for the record, I'm not saying that the town manager and town attorney will support this, but I'm just trying to be responsive to your requests. And it will be ultimately, you know, the council's just further discussion and decision.
I would, how about, determine that the requested item shall not be heard at this time, at this time by the planning commission.
Or cannot be considered, like, because, could be, right?
I think.
I think Peter's probably right at this time and just leave that.
Okay.
That they, somebody could.
Where are you putting that in, Peter?
I can read it, you know?
No, you just added a phrase now. Where are you adding that phrase?
Shall not be heard at this time by the planning commission.
At the end.
You're adding that as a final sentence?
At the end of her whole sentence.
At the end of what? That's all you have to say?
It's at the bottom here, in your, what you're, where?
The item shall not be heard.
Why don't you read it back, Peter?
Oh, yeah, I'll read it back.
Shall not be heard at this time.
At this time.
By the planning commission.
I just added the phrase.
Okay.
And it gives the, the quester, the time, the understanding of perhaps why or why not, and that everybody can respond and say, that's going to be heard in six months, we don't want to do it, it's not appropriate, or go fish or move out of town.
Gone fish, or gone fishing.
Gone fishing.
Not that I'm trying to leave Adam out of this mess. Do you really want to say, shall have discretion to determine item at a future board meeting for discussion? Or should it be, or referred to the director?
You know, actually, it's going to have to be referred to the town manager. I, under the current form of government for Quarter of Madera, the planning commission can't, man, doesn't have the authority to direct the planning director to take action, so I misspoke. It would have to actually.
Or you can leave out staff entirely.
Exactly.
That's what I was saying, not to, that's why I was trying to.
Either here, it's either want to put it on a future agenda or not at this time.
Yeah.
Whether to place the item on.
And all due respect to those commissioners that suggested it.
Item on a future agenda for discussion. That, you could probably stop right there. I shall have discussion to determine if item to be placed on a future agenda for discussion, period.
Or not.
Well, if you have, you determine whether it'll be put on, that means you determine, yes, it will, no, it won't. You don't have to say or not. It's understood in having the discretion to make the choice.
I thought we already had the language.
No, we're taking out the language beyond where it got to you. We're just.
Discretion to place the item, the commission shall have the discretion.
To determine.
Either to place the item on the agenda at this.
I scrolled through.
Shall have the discretion to place the item on the agenda at this time, or.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Think it'd be clear to be.
On a future agenda for discussion, that's all you say and leave it there.
I think it's clear, it's whether to place the item.
Yeah, yes, you're right.
Shall have whether to place the item.
The item on the agenda at this time, whether or not to place the agenda.
I wouldn't say not, just whether to place the item.
All right.
On a future agenda for discussion. You had discussion in here. Are you taking that out too?
I don't, I didn't have discussion.
Judith did. She said, the commission shall have discretion to determine.
Discretion.
Whether to place the item on a future agenda for discussion.
You could take that off.
Take off for discussion off, okay. Then stop with whether or not to put on a future agenda. That's it, let it go with that.
All right.
Can we all agree to that one?
Yep.
We can't give Adam orders.
Okay, so, that was the point of contentions, how we say. The rest of the edits to the rules and procedures are in your packet, and if anybody has any other commentary on it, now that we got through the hard one. Dr. Bundy, did you have anything on the rest of the edits?
No.
Mr. Lee?
I do. I wanted to address 2.2.1, especially since there's an open planning commission appointment coming up. I just wanted to really say that after reading those tenants of, and description of what we do, it's a real honor and I truly like to embody those ethics, and it's good to see it codified in writing, what we try to achieve here, so that's all I had to say about that.
Well, hooray for that, yes. I believe that this was a terrific set of edits, and I support the adoption of what we've come to agree to. So, with that said, do we need a motion or shall we just?
Motion, motion approved by the majority of the commission would, to recommend, yeah, make a recommendation to council or refer to council.
Didn't you have something at the beginning where you said we had like the three choices or something?
Yeah, the page four of the staff report.
Yeah. There was something somewhere, I know.
Under options. So, your number two is really what you're.
But it's not quite with.
Well, I know it's not as indicated above, of course. We didn't, we just did this right now, so you'd have to say as, as just amended as we just talked about, whatever, whatever the.
With the proposed.
Yeah. Just refer to what we. Just refer to what we admit, what was just agreed upon by the commission.
Approved of the proposed amendment.
So if you move to approve the, uh, amendments as, um, modified, that would be adequate, I believe.
As modified at this meeting, how's that, so it's not
Mm-hmm.
so it's, uh as written at this meeting.
Motion.
So you're gonna, um, go ahead and make that, uh, Phyllis says?
No, we're not gonna make it because
All right, so that would leave it to you, Dr. Bundy?
I don't think I should.
Or to you, Charles?
I've moved to approve motion recommending to the town council approval of the proposed amendments to the planning commission rules and procedures with the proposed modifications to rule four point two point two as discussed, uh, previously at this meeting, and other revisions to attachment one.
I second the motion.
Bingo.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman? And Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye, reluctantly.
I waited for that one, all right.
A yes is a yes.
Boy, you wanted me to say no, you were hoping I'd say no.
I was putting you on the spot.
Okay.
They had the vote.
So then, Mr. Wolf, you have the next item.
I'll try, I'll try to make this brief, but I did wanna, um, I did wanna, uh, you, you know, the commissioners oftentimes get questions from members of the public about what, you know, processes and procedures and, um, you know, how to go about this and that, and what should I do if I'm adding on to my house, or et cetera, et cetera, and we, we obviously get those questions, one of the things we've been trying to do, or thinking about in the last several, a few months, several months, is to, um, how to, how to better inform residents and other customers and, um, about our, uh, planning department processes, um, and how it relates also to building permits and whatnot, um, and so we've, we've started to develop some new handouts and information, put them on our website, uh, for the general public, um, it's really part of a strategy that I think, we call it business process reforms, or whatever it is, but, uh, we, we're also in the middle, in the midst of a customer satisfaction survey right now, so we have about a hundred responses, we're gonna try to make a push, um, by the end of the month to get, you know, double that, at least, um, if possible, if you know people, by the way, who, um, uh, have interacted with the town, it's really any department at the town, have them go and take our survey, which hopefully is somewhere easy to find here, we, we sent out over thirteen hundred notices to, uh, anybody who had, um, at all applicants, building and planning, um, or owner, property owners, that had, um, uh, come to the planning or building department, so we gave them mailers and told them how to, you know, the web, the web link to go to the Survey Monkey site, um, we've put it up on our website, sent it out on news flashes and all sorts of things like that, so I think it's, just so you know, it's, please, hopefully be here.
It's on the chron- it's in the Chronicle.
There we go. Yes, it's in the Chronicles.
And I think Rebecca's really good about putting things like that on Nextdoor also.
It's been on Nextdoor, um, but, you know, I think we, we're trying to get, as well, people who have gone through the process with, with us, um, who have also had some time to reflect on it, so they're not in the heat of the moment, so we, but, uh, but in any case, here's the w- page on our website where you can take the survey, um, and, uh, give some, give some responses to, uh, the town, this is really for internal purposes and our department, and all of our, all the department heads are, you know, hopefully take some feedback and think about how we can, um, better serve, uh, our customers moving forward with that information, um, as well, like I said, we, uh, the second part of that was to think about, um, let's see if you go, you know, some more handouts that we're using at the counter now with, with, um, people who come to our counter, but also, um, I guess we, we're calling them planning tools, but we have this page which was really somewhat little used, but does have a lot of actual helpful information, so you can see, one of the things we did, we did a planning and building process overview, just a very basic flow chart of, um, yeah, let's see, hopefully it comes up, but basically where you start with the consultation, um, with, uh, staff, and you, we were recommending that people actually talk to all the different departments up front, uh, but once you're, we will tell you which process you have to go through, and then hopefully this is self-explanatory, is self-explanatory, uh, about, uh, how to move through the process from, on the left, planning, then ultimately to the building permit, permit approval process. Uh, another form, uh, that we developed was, once you, more details on the actual process, planning application review process, which is a detailed flow chart of, um, uh, the completeness review and staff work, story polls, um, is on there, uh, we've also, I believe, uh, have a separate standalone story poll handout now that talks about, uh, exactly how to do that and how to get the, you know, so people are aware right up front, and we've had some issues on that, so, um, but this gets the, all the noticing requirements and whatnot and, and, uh, tries to give all the information in one place, yes, Phyllis?
Yeah, I wondered, are you putting in with this story poll sheet, the, um, suggestion I made about people who were raising their homes in the flood plain to mark the story poles, if they're adding a second story, because that one we had on
Golden Line.
Golden Line.
No, no.
People were saying how tall that second story was, whereas the second story wasn't that much taller, you know, it didn't show the proper roof line it would be built upon, and that's why I suggested, and that's even missing, and by the way, she did not make the changes, I'll read them again for the minutes, um, that you either take the orange tape or take some red paint, and let's say you're raising it two feet, two feet up from the bottom of the story pole horizontally, you know, draw a line or put the tape, so people can then see that second story is not twelve feet tall, it's
Well, uh
Whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I, I question the usefulness of that and the utility of that, I don't, I think the purpose of the story poles really are to give a sense of the overall height and the massing, um, it's another measurement, it's already quite cumbersome for people, um, the surveyor to, to shoot another line and mark something that's gonna be exact at different locations on every pole, I, I, to me, it's, um, it's, it's, I think you can, um, interpret as need be where that second story is gonna go, but I don't, I don't know if it, you know, the drawings are really what's supposed to give you that, the proportionality between the different, um, parts of the, of the project, um, I, I hate to go just
Okay, this is, we're getting way out of left field here on this, I think, to some extent, but, um
Well, it's a hand, I mean, it's a discussion about a handout, I don't, I don't think, I mean, it's, we can have another discussion about it, but I
So, I think, uh
I think what's more important is that people understand they gotta put story poles up, if we wanna get into the details of additional markings to put on it, we can try, I just, I think it's already a very difficult process for people, frankly.
I mean, to specifically say that if we go out and look at them and we need some more information, we can ask staff to do that, and that can be part of
We can try, we, yeah.
We're gonna spill the clam up into
So, you know, um, we'll see one a year.
Now, but
Yeah.
The comments that were made on that particular project application had to do with how tall it was, the height of the story itself, rather than the height of the entire building.
Okay, well, but
That's what I picked up on.
That's fine, but I think that you, we have other tools to actually make that clarification to people, um, we did wanna highlight, obviously, ADUs, um, and, and sort of provide some information, um, uh, specific to that, so that people have, uh, a very clear idea of how to get through that process, um, one of the things, you know, this may ultimately be linked to, the county is working on something to market and promote ADUs, and then they're trying to create a sort of centralized website for that in the county, and they can link to sort of our, our own documents on that, um, there's, uh, we, Doug Bush, you know, he helped write the ordinance, but, so he put together some of this, also an FAQ on, on sort of how, what our rules really mean, you know, and what common questions that we get when somebody's thinking about doing an ADU, so this is all now available for anybody, it's on our website, but it's also, we're now using this, um, here's some good handouts at the bo- at that end of this for, from the state and from other jurisdictions, there's checklist, so we have links to that, um, so I think we're, you know, it, there's, there's, uh, we've updated, I think, the, uh, language in our checklist, um, for major design review to include, uh, sections, um, through the, the, uh, drawings, that includes sections, so you get the floor heights and, and whatnot, uh, as well as updated the story poll language on that, we've added the indemnity provisions to the appli- to the, um, application, uh, de- development application form, so we're, we're starting to try to really, um, deal with some of these things that have come up from time to time and put them into, um, our standards and, and requirements, so I wanted to walk you through some of that, we're gonna try to, we'll tell the council next week, we have a presentation in front of the, the council on, on, for planning and building apartment, we'll let them know as well, I think it's, the more people who know that this is out there, the, the more helpful it can be, um, we have, uh, we also updated our zoning maps, finally, um, so that's, that's something you should, we'll, we'll give you copies, we're, we're hoping to, uh, um, change one, the MX one color didn't really come out as we had hoped, uh, but, uh, whoops, that's, I said the wrong one, that's the overlay one, what happened there, I think it was labeled differently. Did we not, maybe we didn't actually, um, yeah, we didn't, I think we got the wrong map up here, so anyways, um, we'll fix that.
Coming.
Uh, and then, of course, you know, we've still have our active projects, you can, we have our project page with all the
That's good, the active projects.
You'll see Amy, you know, for example, um, this ties into our, you know, Amy's has been updated with, as of April seventeenth, there are all their illustrative plans and project plans are up there.
Their new design.
Yep, um, and, and so, you know, I think, um, there's a lot of information on our website and, and that I think is helpful and can be useful, um, it's a good idea, if you get questions, you know, try to direct them, folks, to our website first and foremost, but staff's always available as well to answer questions, so it's one of the things we're working on, and then finally, we're gonna go to the, part of that, this also, the strategy to improve our, um, customer services, also, um, looking into a new permit tracking software, um, that hopefully, once we get it up and running, we'll have a good public interface that people can go on and sort of, by property address, see what permits are out and what are their, um, locations even of where permit activity is happening, and, and get a lot of information on permit status, just where in the process they are, that's, that's down the road, but we are going to be requesting that from the council in the next budget, um, budget year.
Yes, Phyllis.
I was gonna suggest with these, um, sheets you've put together, too many people don't look on the website to find something, you might, may wanna ask Rebecca to put something on Nextdoor, which everybody looks at to see who's being talked about now, and to refer to, if you have any questions about planning, there's now information on the planning department site, on the website, something like that, and get them stored.
This is, um, I, I've heard people say it's hard to use, I don't think it's hard to use, I think it's very simple to use, and it's all there.
Our website?
Yeah.
I think it's excellent.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, it's, it's very intuitive and it, it's plain English.
Yeah.
So, it's really great to see these things take fruition, or come to fruition and, um, be out there, I hope that it makes your lives a little easier and clearer, that's really
I think that's a big part of the goal, is that we have tools now, we can refer people to thing, you know, we get a lot of questions understandably, and, um, um, these are also, I mean, it's been helpful for us to actually, when you start to really drill down on what the process is, you sort of understand what each of us
So, what most, uh, planning and building departments don't do is describe either the benefit of the process, or for instance, an ADUs, why is an ADU beneficial to a homeowner or not, you know, what are your pros and cons for doing that, because it starts to fall into slightly, should I or shouldn't I, or should you or shouldn't you?
Right.
But there are clear things that would come from various taxing authorities or, you know, so somebody could hand, give you a handout on the benefits you could post for that, and also about, you know, what is a development agreement, or those kinds of things, uh, people ask, they don't know, um
No, and, and there's a lot more, you know, yeah, there's definitely a lot of education that can, uh, be done around ADUs, um, we'll continue to sort of figure out other ways to, um, uh, you, you know, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but I think, um, uh, at least around the process, uh, at least giving people the understanding that of, uh, the reduced requirements and some of the parking issues that are no longer required to do that, I, I, it is nice if you go on, you know, um, San Mateo County has a great sort of ADU website, um, and Marin County, you know, we're, we're working with the county to sort of try to, they have a lot more resources in terms of creating an actual, real, um, nice-looking, sort of standalone webpage, marketing stamp, you know, certain things that they can tout and, and sort of get out and disseminate, uh, but at the same time, making sure that they're linking to our town-specific information, 'cause it's not all ordinances are the same across the county, and, and, uh, I'm not, yeah, we're, one of the things we're thinking of doing is, is just trying to make sure that, the next step would be on that, would be to sort of have some sample, go through the process essentially ourselves and figure out what the costs are for a standard, you know, I've seen the other jurisdictions, they have like, here's a standard, let's say you're doing a detached thousand square foot or eight hundred square foot ADU, here are the fees that are gonna be, you're gonna have to expend from the, you know, whether it's utilities or whatnot and so on, and go, go through that and just give some people a little bit more clarity about, um, how much it, those things cost, and, um, um, some configurations even, I've seen typical floor plans, just trying to make those things more accessible and more potentially a, an option for people who may be considering it, and I think through that, you get people to recognize that the town is supportive of this, you know, uh, by providing all this information.
You can put the links to the
Yeah, we have some of those on the back of it.
Yeah.
Are you doing one on the JADUs also?
It's, well, it's this, yeah, the, the process is in the ADU handout, I think it's very similar, but you can see there's, you know, the FAQ has a lot of information on both the accessory dwelling unit and the ADU, and, uh, how, you know, it talks about, if you go through this, that there's a lot of information that will explain, um, our rules, and how do you get started, for example, here you go, so.
That's great, I think it's a fabulous, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question, thinking about, uh, residents requesting permits for new docks, or a major overhaul of a dock where a permit is required, that would also have a reference for building, uh, construction techniques and materials that, uh, I had looked at, that, I think this is something that really will need, need to get out.
We'll have to, it's, yeah, that's another piece of work we're gonna have to deal with, but, um, along with public works, obviously, will be part of that process.
Okay, does everybody feel like we've exhausted that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, um, I think that's a great update, and we're ready to go on then to reports and announcements, um, I attended, uh, last week's city council meeting at which I attended, uh, last week's city council meeting, at which the, uh, appeal for the Golden Hind, um, project to be approved was denied. And, um, that's really all that was significant out of that meeting. So, didn't seem that there was any contest to speak of, so
Was that a unanimous decision?
Yes. Yeah. I, I, I don't understand, but we'll, we'll talk about that off the record. So then, Adam, what else do you wanna tell us about?
No, I, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay, so, and, um, I noticed that, uh, the story polls are up for Amy's. So you guys can drive by, and they have a board on the street that talks about the project, so that's our next
Notices should be going out on Thursday or Friday this week, um, and we'll place those notices on the site as well. And it sounds like we have some, um, we'll remind, we'll get the, the, uh, the story polls up to, up to snuff there. It sounds like the wind, or somebody may, something may have caused one to come down.
Some, when I drove by yesterday, there was somebody working on it from the ground, so something may have fallen or moved.
Um, so, Phyllis, you had some additions to the meeting notes.
Uh, to the minutes?
Yes.
It was on page two of the minutes, the last sentence that starts out, "Vice Chair Metcalf suggested"
Yes.
And I sent it to Adam, but I guess she wanted to pick it up. "That applicants be requested to hang tape between story poles to show new first-floor roof line on future projects that are raising dwellings out of the floodplain and adding a second story to better define the proposed height of the additions." And I'll just give this back to you, she'll have to write it down again, here. I may have, she may have been confused, 'cause I wrote page ninety-six as I was reading it online.
Okay.
So with that said, any other, uh, changes to the minutes by any other members? Okay, motion to approve, as noted.
Do you have to call the roll?
All in favor? A motion to approve. You're abstaining.
Okay, so, you can second, we're gonna adopt
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, and then, motion to adjourn.
Yay!
Adjourn, meeting is over, this is closed.